A full list of meeting rules is displayed at the entrance of the council chambers. During the public hearing portion of the agenda and during communications from citizens, when your name is called, please come forward to the podium, then state your name, your town of residence, and begin speaking. Remarks shall be limited to three minutes. Citizens who are at the meeting and wish to donate their time to a single speaker must fill out an individual card and then combine their speaker cards. In such an event, one person from the group shall be designated to present their remarks, which shall be limited to six minutes. If one speaker is speaking on behalf of others who are present, the mayor or vice mayor shall read into the record the names of those whose time is combined. No person other than the individual speaking shall enter into the discussion. Officials on the dais may not respond to any questions or comments during communications from citizens. However, the council may ask questions during public hearing items. All comments and questions shall be directed through the mayor or presiding officer. Thank you again for attending a Gilbert Town meeting and for your participation in local government.
We'll get started in about one minute here. Okay, I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Gilbert Town Council, May 20th, 2025. For invocation and pledge of allegiance to start, first, the invocation by Judy Albrecht of the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints from the Highland West Stake. Thank you, Judy.
Thank you for the opportunity, council members and mayor and vice mayor. Our Father in Heaven, we are grateful this evening together as citizens of Gilbert and with this town council. We are thankful for this community that we have built based on the values and standards of many good people. And we ask for thy guidance and direction as important discussions are led tonight and decisions are made. We pray for thy Spirit to be here and to guide and lead each member and each person that participates. We pray for the safety and protection of those who try to protect us each day. We're grateful for those first responders and pray that thou will bless them and their families. We are grateful for the school system. We're grateful for the youth and children in our community and pray that thou will bless and watch over them. We give thanks for the bounteous blessings that we have and pray that we might share those with those around us who are in need and be aware of those needs. And we ask and pray humbly for these blessings in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Councilmember Lyons will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll have the roll call now.
Mayor Scott Anderson.
Here.
Vice Mayor Bobby Buckley.
Here.
Councilmember Chuck Bon Giovanni.
Here.
Councilmember Kenny Buckland.
Here.
Councilmember Young Kaprowski.
Here.
Councilmember Monte Lyons.
Present.
And Councilmember Jim Torgerson.
Here.
Aquorum is present.
Thank you. We have one proclamation on the agenda tonight, a proclamation declaring the week of May 18th through the 24th, 2025, as National Public Works Week. And Councilmember Kaprowski will be presenting this proclamation.
Thank you. At this time, I would like any member of our Public Works team to come up and join me at the front of the room. Anyone that is a public works professional from any jurisdiction or place, please come join us at the front of the room. And please come to my other side as well, so we can fill, fill the middle space, please. This proclamation is labeled "People, Purpose, and Presence." Public Works Professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of Gilbert, Arizona. These infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of Public Works Professionals who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. Whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in Gilbert, Arizona, to gain knowledge of and maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of Public Works and Public Works programs in their respective communities, and whereas the year 2025 marks the 65th Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association, I, Young Kaprowski, Councilmember of the Town of Gilbert, on behalf of Mayor of the Town of Gilbert, Arizona, do proclaim the week of May 18th through 24th, 2025, as National Public Works Week. I urge all citizens to join with the representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies and activities, events, and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our Public Works Professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety, and advancing the quality of life for all. Would you like to speak, Jessica, as our Public Works Director?
I just want to thank everybody for being here this evening. Very proud of the team and the hard work and dedication that they put into maintaining and protecting our infrastructure on a daily basis. And I wanted to especially recognize David Fabiano, served as our town engineer for the last seven years, and then more recently as an Assistant Public Works Director. He's been battling medical challenges over the last two years. We're very grateful to have him here today. You won't meet a more dedicated, fierce defender of quality infrastructure for the town and the world, and the entire team here, and the entire field of engineering is better for him being a member of the APWA and supporting and recognizing and representing the field of engineering. And just wanted to recognize him tonight.
Thank you. David, I'd like to present this proclamation directly to you tonight. Thank you for your dedication to the profession and for always doing the right thing. And as an engineer myself, you've been such a great role model to all of us. And so, thank you very much. Would you like to say anything?
I would like to say something, but I cannot say things like I used to. And that hurts me beyond what you do, I can express, because Public Works, the infrastructure that we live on and exist in ubiquitous across our land and world, is what, something that all of us depend upon who don't even know it. And I'm so glad that Mayor Scott Anderson has made this proclamation declaring this National Public Works Week. And I'm honored to be here to receive it with him. And Young is a professional engineer too, and she's been a great example of that and the practice of it and the integrity and responsibility that it comes with that position. Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Town staff or any council members that want to join? That'd be great. Perfect. Let's do it. Okay, let's do a few rows. Get in really tight. Thank you. If you're tall, go in the back. If you're short, come to front.
Very special. Thank you, everyone who participated. Move now to public hearings. I don't have any requests to speak. I don't know if the council has, wants to remove any of the items from the public hearing list for separate consideration. We have a couple that are postponed, asked to be postponed. Two has been requested to be postponed. Yeah, staff, staff has requested that two be postponed till June 10th. And three is by applicant. We'll pull off seven separately then. I'll open the public hearing on the other items and close the public hearing and make them, ask for a motion that we postpone item two to the June 10th regular meeting, item three to the June 24th regular meeting, and then approve item four, five, six, and seven A. I hear a second. So moved. It's been moved by Councilmember Bon Giovanni, seconded by Vice Mayor Buckley. Please vote. Motion carries seven zero. Item seven, Councilmember Torgson.
I just wanted to talk for a second about development paying for itself along with these fees. And if we could have someone just discuss this a little bit, because I know that fees have been increased in some areas, but it's not, it's not for any reason but paying for what it's costing. Do we have anyone?
I think we can ask Kyle if he'll address that.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thanks for having us this evening. This is the Development Services Fees Update. We'll go through a couple quick slides. It will definitely hit your question, but it'll kind of paint the picture of where we're at and where we're going and kind of the road that we've been on. Joseph Hewitt is here with me tonight. We've also got some other staff members that have been key and very integral into putting this together, folks that deal with the fees on a daily basis and interact with all of our customers. So the process that we've been through, in, in spring of 2024, we came to the council's financial retreat and had a discussion on fees. And at that time, the council gave us direction to move forward and conduct a fee study. And that included taking a look at our development services fees, the ICC valuation table, which is the International Code Council Valuation Table, and then look at calculating new building permit and plan review fees as well. And then come back to the council with those recommendations and a final report that was done. So as Councilmember Torgson was starting to mention, on the development services process and the fees that are involved, this is basically the process that, that projects will go through to be approved and constructed in the town. Typically starts with the land use planning and the entitlements, and then we'll go into the building and engineering side of things. Our inspections then are conducted at the end of the construction, and then they're open for business. The intent of the fees has always been that growth pays for growth and that the taxpayers or the citizens are not burdened with the development costs of that development. So the developers pay for their share of the, of the processes. And again, this is the process that most of the projects go through. Again, the importance of the fees is to help cover the cost of the town process related to the review and approval of the development requests. Again, as I've mentioned, and Councilmember Torgson mentioned, that growth does pay for growth in the, in the Town of Gilbert. It's always been that way since I've been here. And again, the intent is to not burden the citizens with the cost of that development. You can see over time that we've had a, a gap begin to occur between the revenues in Development Services and the fees. We were pretty tight there for quite a while, and then we've seen that gap widen over the last, last couple of years. And there's several different reasons for that, which I'll, I'll touch on here in a little bit. This was one of the reasons that we did come to council in 2024 and say, hey, we, we really need to take a look at our fees, knowing what the intent of the fees is, and identify this gap that was occurring, and receive that direction to move forward. Here's the history of the Development Services fees. You can see in, in 1999, we adopted that building valuation table. In 2007, there was a three percent, three and a half percent increase. The next year, there was a six percent increase. The fee changes in 13, 14, and 15 were, were done on specific application types or for, or for specific reasons, but the entirety of the fees were not looked at, at those times. There was always an intent and a, and a desire to take a look at those fees, but there had always been things getting in the way. For example, we had the recession in, in late 2008, 2009, that put a hold on a lot of things. There's been some political direction at the time not to move forward with different fees. And then when we really ramped up and started to bring the fees back, we hit the pandemic. So for every step we seemed to take forward, we would, we would run into a roadblock. So the process that we went through this time, we engaged a third-party consultant to evaluate the, the fees. They worked very, very closely with staff, both in Development Services and in Budget. We identified all different lines of services. Again, going back to that previous chart, you could see the, the flow of the processes. And we established what we were calling swim lanes to identify the timing of each of the process. So by swim lanes, we looked at, basically it's follow the paper. An application comes in, who touches it, who, how, how long do they touch it? Where does it go after that? What is the review time? What is the review cycle? Then we go to a planning commission. Then we've got staff reports. We come to a town council. So we put costs to each one of those different steps so that we knew exactly what the cost was to the town for processing those different, different fees. That's what the swim lanes are for. Again, I mentioned that the personnel costs were assigned to these different tasks depending upon the time spent. And then one of the discussions that we had to, with council at, at the different retreats is, you know, we want to remain competitive with neighboring communities. We want to make sure that we're strategic in the look that we take to these different fees and not, not outpace ourselves, or maybe there's a certain reason to set a fee at a certain level, even if it does or does not cover that entire cost. Here are the different Development Services fee categories. Again, you can see there's quite a few, and we went through each one of the different line items in each one of those categories to determine the costs. This is the valuation table that was done in 1999. I'm going to turn it over to Joseph at this point. He can talk a little bit to that, what we would like to do annually going forward with this valuation table. And then he can run through some different examples of what the fee changes would look like on certain projects.
Thanks, Mayor and Council. So you can, as Kyle had mentioned, we haven't updated the valuation table since 1999. And as you can imagine, the value of buildings have increased substantially since, in the last 25 years. And so, one of the goals from this study is to update the valuation table to the most current version, and then on an annual basis have it to where it automatically is updated to the most current valuation table that's provided by the ICC. And this is similar to what neighboring communities do like Chandler and Surprise. And here's an example on the building valuation table. So this is a multifamily residential development. Based off of the current valuation table that we're using, it's $59 per square foot. And now in 2024, on the valuation table, it really should be $148 per square foot. And just to clarify, this is just a valuation. This isn't an actual fee. The fees are, certain fees are determined based off the valuation. And you, you'll see that here in some of these examples. And so, all of these examples are actual developments that were completed in Gilbert recently. And so, this one right here is an apartment with a garage. And so, you can see with the current valuation and then the proposed valuation, you can see quite a bit of a big increase. But then you look at the current fees and then the proposed fees, they do go up a little bit. So it doesn't, the valuation doesn't make the fee go up that much as well. It's based off of the valuation, so. And then here's a single-family home subdivision. You can say same thing, current valuation is only 230, proposed valuation would go up to 660. One thing I do want to point out is the standard plan review is, is a one-time fee, and that's just based off of how many flooring plans you have. So you would only pay that fee for however many different flooring plans you have within that subdivision. You wouldn't pay it for every single home. And then here's just another example of a fast, fast food restaurant. You can see current valuation, proposed valuation, and then what the current fee would be, and then what the proposed fee would be based off of this study. And then here's another one with a small tenant improvement. You can see current fees and then what the proposed fees are. And so, just to kind of give you an idea of what we're looking at. And then lastly, we have the miscellaneous fees here. And you can see, like, for example, the variance, single-family, we kept the the variance, single family, we kept the same. You know, business license fee, alcohol, special event went up a little bit. Facilities permit fee stayed the same. Fire inspections went up a little bit. And then even like this three, four, three quarter inch water meter set is a great example. As, when we were doing the study, we realized that we are currently paying $190 just for the parts to install three quarter inch water meter set. So currently at our $150, our $115 fee, we're losing money every time we go out and have to install a three, three quarter inch water meter set. So you can see with the proposed fee, you know, we have the 190 for the parts, and then we have a very small amount for label, labor for the employee to go out and do the install.
As part of the processes and as we do with most things, we did do stakeholder outreach. On April 16th, we did a presentation to the chamber and went through the fee increases. The comments that we received is that the fees are still lower here than in other municipalities, and that the fees seem fair, especially given the time that it's been since the fees were changed. In early May, then, we also sent notification to the AZ Home Builders Association, multifamily builders, and the Arizona League of Cities. We've received essentially two questions from them. When did the fees go into effect, which is July 1st? And will it raise the system development fees? And the answer to that is no. I mentioned that there's been some changes in activity that have, that have caused some of the, the fees to change and, and created some of that gap that you saw. A lot of it are market conditions, you know, the price of land in town, the ability to get into the ground and, and make those, the, complete those projects. We're seeing, we're seeing a change in the project mix, and we're starting to see more mixed use now. We're starting to see more redevelopment. The days of the, the large greenfields are, are pretty much behind us. I mentioned there's reduced availability of land. Things are getting much tighter and much smaller as we approach buildout. And then what have we done and measures that we've taken as we've seen that gap instead of just running to council and, and increasing fees? We have looked at our, our staffing models, especially if we, as we change processes. What can we do better? What can we, can we reclassify some positions? Can we move some positions into other areas where there's more value add than, than the current process? We've looked at a lot of streamlining of processes. You've heard me talk in the past about how we have a menu of plan review options that folks can choose from to meet their needs. And then we've added a lot of lines of service as well to development services over time that were never captured with these fees. We're doing a lot of fiber review and, and inspection now as, as the fiber makes its way through the community. And then we've started helping out Public Works and CIP with review of their projects as well to make sure that they're meeting the standards of the town and protecting that infrastructure that you heard so much about a few minutes ago. So with that, I know this is a lot of the same information you heard during the, the last retreat. Councilmember Torgerson, I hope I hit your question about growth paying for growth. We're here to help answer any questions. As I mentioned, we've got a lot of team members with us as well that would be more than happy to come up and, and answer specifics.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you. I think I failed to open the public hearing and close. I'll open the public hearing and close the public hearing on item seven and entertain a motion.
Make a motion to accept it as written.
It's been moved by Councilmember Torgerson, seconded by Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor Buckley. Please vote. Did you vote? Try it in there. There you go. Motion carries seven zero. Thank you. I next needed a motion to recess the regular meeting and convene in special meeting.
I make a motion to reset the regular meeting and reconvene the special meeting?
Yes.
Is that where I'm at?
Yes, it's been moved by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Councilmember Bon Giovanni, to recess our regular meeting and convene in special meeting. We have two items to be considered in the special meeting, item eight and nine, both related to the budget. And I think we'll start with the, can we do them both together, the presentation, Kelly? Okay.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I'll start our budget hearing off today, similar to how we did our study session a few weeks ago. I'd like to start by providing some background in the current economic conditions we are in and potentially anticipating in the next fiscal year. Wanted to start with what we understand, the loss of the residential rental sales tax as, that equates to about $9 million a year that actually started in January 1st of this year, but that will flow forward. That was a permanent elimination of that tax category for us rolling forwards. That'll be the full $9 million. And fiscal year '26, and then state shared income tax reduction, which was a stepped down reduction towards the current flat tax that had an impact of about $5 million to the town of Gilbert. And again, that is permanent moving forward. For total impact of about $14 million of ongoing revenue that the town would use to provide for the various services that our residents receive. That was, and Kelly can provide more detail, but that was the bulk of the new ongoing revenue we would have to address the needs of the community in the upcoming fiscal year. Council did increase the sales tax rate last fall, and that took effect on January 1st of this year. That sales tax has been identified to provide for some quality of life projects that are underway as we speak. We still are seeing inflation and supply chain issues that are not yet fully resolved continuing to impact construction schedules and construction costs across our capital projects, continue to address wage inflation and market competition for FTEs. And again, increased workload on staff by our inability to bring forward the positions that we believe are needed across our service lines to meet the demands of the community in the upcoming fiscal year. And I know we'll be having ongoing dialogues about how we address that issue because it's not sustainable moving forward. We've got growth in aging infrastructure that continue to provide budget pressure in addition to the capital projects that we have identified and have underway now. We've got a lot of projects in the upcoming five and 10-year CIP plan that will need to be addressed, and a lot of those address aging infrastructure and reconstruction of aging infrastructure as our community continues to age. And then there is the potential for a recession on the horizon. It's been a long time coming, since the Great Recession of 2008, 2011, and 12. We have been watching signs of, of that potential occurring for several years now, but with a lot of the things that are happening in the economy with tariffs and other factors. As I said, some of those supply chain issues, we will continue to be watchful for potential recession within the next fiscal year and have to pivot accordingly to make sure we stay within our available revenue streams. In summary, fiscal '26 is going to be a difficult budget year for the town, and the available revenues moving forward are also likely to continue to be tight. We wanted to highlight some revenue differences in how funds that are collected are used by Gilbert in comparison to some of our peer communities around the region. This one is the vehicle license tax that currently goes into the general fund of every community except for Gilbert. Gilbert places that into our streets fund for the maintenance of our streets. It's about $14 million a year, though, that other cities make available for general government services such as police, fire, parks and rec, and other service lines that are funded out of the general fund. And then looking at revenue differences, and we talk a lot about rates, and rates are important as we compare ourselves to cities from around the region. But it's also important to understand the revenue that we collect off those rates. And you'll see the charts in front of us, starting with the sales tax per capita. This is fiscal year $24. Gilbert has available to, to spend on a per resident basis, $540, which is the lowest of any of the, the cities here in the region. Moves on up up to Scottsdale, has $1,379 available per resident in sales tax dollars to spend. In general fund dollars in total, and looking at all categories, again, Gilbert is the lowest at 999, and this is based off fiscal year '25 budget, budgeted dollars as we have not finished the fiscal year yet. And we are the lowest and the highest being at the other end of the range. The city of Glendale has $1,784 per resident available to spend on general fund services. So again, I know we've had a lot of discussions about this. We will be having additional discussions about this, but these are, this is the dollars that we have available to spend on police, fire, parks and rec, and all those other services funded out of our general fund. It is tight and made tighter by actions of the legislature and impacts to our available revenues for fiscal '26. With that, I will hand it over to Kelly Fost, and she will walk us through the rest of the presentation.
Thank you, Patrick. Patrick's got the tough news, I've got the good news. We get a lot of accolades in Gilbert. So even with the small per capita revenues that we have, we do a lot with those dollars. So third safest and most affordable city in the top 100 places to live, most caring city in America, number one city for economic growth. So a lot of really great accolades are happening in Gilbert. As you know, we continue to do our zero base. We do a third of the organization every year. With all of the inflation, we've actually had to add money into these zero base budgets overall, and just in order to keep the same services that they've provided in the past, they just cost more to do. So we've lost a little bit of ground in our total savings here, but are continuing to operate, and we continue to look at those cost savings every year. Our budget process goes pretty much the whole year, kicking off in September, going through executive team, town manager's office, financial retreat, and council study session, which was in April. And then tonight is our preliminary budget adoption. Final budget adoption will be June. As you're aware, according to Arizona statutes, the preliminary budget adoption, I mean arguably, is the more important of the two. The number that is adopted by council tonight will be the maximum amount, budget number expenditure that the town can have for next year. Final budget is allowed to be a lower number, but not a higher number, or it could be the same. With the recommended positions for the fiscal '26 budget, there's a total of about 34 full-time employees across all of the funds and about 17, 18 LTAs or limited term agreement employees, which typically have a one-year contract. That would be part of the one-time money as opposed to ongoing because the ongoing money was very tight this year. With that, the largest part of our budget is our capital improvements, and that's about $1.7 billion of improvement. Most of those investment is in the streets area and the water improvement area, which you're aware of on those large projects. If we break that number into the projects that we're currently working on that will continue to carry forward, there's about $1.2 billion of projects that are in current year's budget that we're continuing to work on. They take more than one year to complete, so we'll carry those money forward. And then in addition, about $490 million added for additional projects or additional scope on those projects. As you're aware, the full amount of our CIP projects is budgeted, and that's the most conservative approach to make sure that we can issue the contracts, that we have the money we need to complete the projects when we start them, that it's guaranteed and, and set aside for those projects. But it does make the total dollar amount that we adopt in our budget larger, and it is larger than will actually go out, money that will go out the door for next year because these projects will take multiple years to complete. If we look at a comparison between fiscal '25 and fiscal '26, it's about $116 million of difference. The bulk of that difference is in our CIP investment on that bottom line, which is 84, 85 million of the 116. You'll also notice the debt service line is lower, and that's related with paying off the university building debt, which the council's approved and is coming up at the end of June. For our property tax, we've got a levy of $34.8 million that will maintain the rate that we currently have and have had since 2024, so 98 cents per $100 of assessed value. And the upcoming milestones today is preliminary budget adoption, which will set that maximum number for the budget expenditure. It's the CIP review, which is later on the agenda, and then the property tax levy public hearing. Final adoption will be on June 10th, which will be the last time council will discuss those items. Any questions?
Thank you, Kelly. Questions, Council? Councilmember Torgerson.
In, in the budget, are there things that we can discuss tonight that I'd like to see removed?
Yes, I assume you're talking about electric vehicle?
Absolutely, that's one of them.
Yes, so there's an opportunity with direction from the council that that could be directed to not purchase that vehicle until the study session in the future where council has the opportunity to talk about electric vehicles or to give direction to say, we only want it purchased as a, a gas or diesel vehicle, or it can be left as an electric vehicle, whatever the direction from council is, we can accommodate that.
Fantastic. And then in our budget, just because there's so many things that we've gone through and iterations of priorities, and I'm, I'm halfway here between eight and nine, I know that. I wanted to ask, on the budget, there are certain things, I, I believe it's group D, I could be wrong. There's things that are in our budget that we really aren't looking at funding, and we really don't have a, a income stream to come in unless they've been left off at, as we've cleaned this up as it's come forward. But for instance, I'm looking at the bottoms of group D, Freestone Ball Field improvements. Are those still in the budget as a, as a number, but without funding?
Kelly, if I could jump in real quick. Mayor, Councilmember Torgerson, yeah, those group D items are not included in the budget. That's from those quality of life projects. We do not have identified funding for those, and those are not contained in the budget.
Right, so there's not a placeholder for?
There is not.
Okay, so it is that, that was my other question.
Yeah, so the capital improvement plan, we do have a lot of information about future projects that help us for planning purposes. Only fiscal year '26 is in the budget with actual funding. The other years help us for planning. And so those group D projects are not in the fiscal 20 budget, 26 budget.
Right, thank you.
Other questions, Council? It's kind of scary. Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you.
Patrick, did you have something to answer?
Mayor, members of the council, I was just gonna, again, remind us, the preliminary budget as required by Arizona state statutes is just setting the upper expenditure limit. The final budget is what the actual budget, approved budget and the items contained within that, that evening on June 10th. So the, and in fact, the only decision the council's making tonight is just setting that upper expenditure limit. We can still have ongoing conversations about items contained within it.
Items can be removed.
Yes.
Things can go down, they just can't go up.
Correct.
Councilmember Bon Giovanni.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to point out, and Kelly did a good job at it, but I just want to reiterate that the budget that we are, that we are preliminary approving tonight is the highest number. It doesn't mean that's what the budget is. Because I see all the time, the comments I hear a lot from residents is $2.5 billion, you guys need to cut money, and we're not spending anywhere near $2.5 billion. That's just the budget, the top line, the top line number that we could spend. But in, in histories over the years, we don't come anywhere near that number.
Thank you. Councilmember Torgerson.
Kelly, I hate to make you get up and come. Would you please, you, you and I had a discussion about this. We're at point 9.8. What the difference between point 9.8 and I think it was point 9.65 or four or whatever? The discussion we had, what it would cost us to lower that at this point?
If we were to target a lower property tax rate, then we would have to structure our future debt to be within that, which would cause us to have to pay additional interest. I don't have that number off the top of my head anymore. I know we talked about it at study session.
It was $10 million over the course of the budget. If we lowered it by 1.2 cents or something, it was about $10 million over the course of this bond. And as you know, I really despise property taxes, but what most people don't understand is that the town of Gilbert's portion of property tax is about 10% of the property tax you're paying. There's schools, universities, the county, there's other things in there. So it is a small portion and the most, if money grew on trees, which it doesn't, a higher rate would pay it off faster with lower interest.
Yes, that's correct.
But right now with, and I'm going to call it a credit card payment, we're, we're ahead of the absolute bottom number, but we're not going lower. ahead of the absolute bottom number, but we're not, going lower is gonna take forever to pay that bill off, correct? So until we start, stop charging the credit card, we're gonna sit here and make sure the bill's paid, is kind of where we are, right? All right, I just wanted to confirm that 10 million was the number and, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? Chris, I think, are we just having a public hearing on the levy tonight? Are we taking action or just having the public hearing? Kelly?
It is a public hearing. We have a public hearing both tonight and a second public hearing at final adoption. But the action tonight is that we set the final public hearing for the June 10th meeting for property tax.
Okay, so that's what we're doing on item eight is setting the final date?
Yep, and then if you wanted anything different, this would be a good time to give staff that direction so that we could create the final budget documents in accordance with what you want.
Okay. With that, I'll entertain a motion by the council on item eight.
I'll move to approve item eight.
It's been moved by Councilmember Kaprowski, seconded by Vice Mayor Buckley to approve item number eight. Please vote. Motion carries seven zero. Moving on to item number nine, which is acceptance of the preliminary budget, in other words, setting the upper limit, is that correct? I'm looking for a motion on that.
Motion to approve item nine?
Nine is written.
Who did that? Did you make the motion?
I'll gladly second it.
Move by?
I'll second it.
Councilmember Buckley, seconded by Councilmember Bonjivani. Please vote. Motion carries seven zero.
Mayor, it's in it. Mayor, let me reset it. It looks like it froze. Give me one second.
Oh, it says not voted, seven zero. No, you can't. Yes, sorry, you're too late. Motion does carry seven zero, thank you. Need a motion to adjourn the special meeting and reconvene in regular meeting.
I make the motion to adjourn the special meeting and reconvene the regular meeting.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to adjourn special meeting and reconvene in regular meeting. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. With that, we'll move on to the consent calendar. Vice mayor.
Thank you, mayor. To, to begin the consent calendar portion of the meeting, I will pass the time over to our town manager, Patrick Baner, to provide an overview on the items and they are items number 10 through 24, I believe. So he will provide an overview of the items on the consent calendar this evening. Patrick, it's all yours.
Thank you, mayor, vice mayor. I'll walk through these. I did receive a request that we will incorporate in the June 10th meeting to walk through these in chronological order as they're contained in your packet. Up to this point, we had been categorizing under our three pillars. So on the slides in the future, we'll have the pillar it falls under, but we'll follow the chronological order they're in, but for tonight's, they are still grouped in the format we've been following up to this point. As always, please feel free to ask any questions you may have on the items up for your consideration tonight. The first, under strong economies, claim settlement contingency request, it's agenda item number 20. This is for all the claims settlements against the town for the period of January 1st and March 31st of 2025. You'll see enumerated the various funds and, and funding categories where those funds would come from. Agenda item number 14 is a nationwide retirement solutions contract under prosperous community. Nationwide Retirement Solutions is the sole vendor for the employee elected deferred compensation plans. This allows employees to participate in deferred compensation plans and is a part of the benefits package offered to all full-time employees and helps attract and retain best-in-class talent for staffing of town lines of service. The town does not contribute or pay any administrative fees for being part of this plan. This extends it for two more years. Agenda item number 20, 123, or I think that's actually 12, a little typo there, apologies, the Symmetra contract under prosperous community. This is stop-loss coverage for the self-insured health trust for fiscal 26 with Symmetra in the amount of $1.668184 million, providing an essential safeguard that ensures the stability of our self-funded health plan while mitigating excessive financial risk, and this is funded from the health fund budget. Agenda item number 19, legal services contingency, again, under prosperous community. General fund contingency request for legal services in the municipal courts. This stems from a 29% increase in DUI and misdemeanor cases and has resulted in additional impacts to court services vital to the justice processes, including public defender appointments and language assistance interpreters. The cost of this is about $140,000 and that comes from our general fund. Agenda items number 10, 11 and 12, these are IGAs with the Arizona Department of Transportation, falls under our exceptional built environment category. And these are IDA, IGAs for additional funding through the Federal Highway Administration, the Highway Safety Improvement Program, and there's a 5.7% match agreement for the town to participate in this program. Each one of those is listed below. Our matching amount is a relatively small amount of around $2,300 per one for the items listed. We talked earlier about the additional hawk traffic signals we're putting in around town, an eastbound right turn lane at Germain and Power, and a southbound right turn lane at Higley and Guadalupe. Any terms and conditions are the standard terms and conditions that come along with the acceptance of these dollars. There's nothing out of the ordinary. Agenda item number 13 is the caretaker landscape and tree management contract under exceptional built environment. It's a contract with caretaker landscape and tree management not to exceed $275,000 per year and a total of $1.375 million over five years to manage landscaping services at two surface water treatment facilities and 30 remote well and booster sites, and this item is funded through water rate funds. Agenda item number 15, the police department motor vehicle towing services. This is under exceptional built environment. It's a motion to award contracts for Gilbert Police Motor Vehicle Towing Services to the blow companies following RFP solicitation to attract vendors able to meet the necessary criteria for motor vehicle towing services. These companies are all City Towing, Apache Sands, Priority Towing and Valley Express. There's no financial impact to the town as the town of Gilbert does not compensate or reimburse the vendors for the stated towing services. Agenda item number 16, Kimley Horn AE Services under exceptional built environment. Motion to approve a contract with Kimley Horn for AE Services for irrigation system replacements at Freestone and Crossroads Park. The irrigation systems at these locations are aging and in need of replacement. It's about a $901,000 expense to the general fund replacement fund within the general fund. And as for some of our council members that are newer and not as familiar with our parks, Freestone and Crossroads are two of our oldest parks in the system and these, these irrigation lines have reached the end of their useful life. Agenda item number 17, it's a PMCM contract with Kennedy Jenks under exceptional built environment. It's a motion to approve a contract with Kennedy Jenks for PMCM services for project phases three and four for seven well projects as part of our Wells Department Development Program, just under $2.8 million and that will be funded through water rate funds, system development fees and/or water rate MPC bonds. Agenda item number 18 is a job order contract, task order with Sunland Asphalt and Construction under exceptional built environment. It's for asphalt, concrete removal and paving services with Sunland Asphalt and Construction LLC for street improvement projects in multiple intersections throughout the town. It's around $351,000 and will be funded through the roadway and maintenance fund. Agenda number 21 is the fiscal 26 through 35 capital improvement program, plan, under exceptional built environment. This is a motion to accept fiscal year 26 through 25 capital improvement plan and declare it a public document. Each year, the plan is reviewed, prioritized and updated as it programs the infrastructure needs for the next 10 years to maintain the quality of life for our residents. The plan identifies the funding sources for each project identified for, for the upcoming year, which are incorporated in the budget. And, and again, just to, so everybody's clear, the only projects in this plan that are funded are the ones in the upcoming, upcoming fiscal year 26 budget, which you will be voting on the final version of on June 10th. Any other projects in years two through five, while we try to identify funding sources for those projects, they are not funded. Any projects that are five years out in duration, most of those, we do not even have funding, revenue streams identified for. Agenda item number 22, the Maricopa Association of Governments, it's a grant under exceptional built environments. So authorize the grant application and acceptance of any awarded funds through a grant with Maricopa Association of Governments for their arterial widening program. Its application addresses improvements to Higley Road from Warner to Amber. This is a 70-30 program which awarded, was just under $8.8 million in, $8 million in grant funds awarded to the town and the town match would be just under $3.8 million of town funds. The town source of that match would come from the 2022 general obligation bonds approved by the voters. With that, mayor, that concludes, vice mayor, that concludes the consent agenda for this evening.
Okay, thank you, Patrick. Does anyone have any questions?
Just a quick question on 15.
Councilmember Torgerson.
Contracts. Is there, does the town have any opportunity to gently massage the customer service of some of these tow companies forward a little bit? Actually, I know some of these people as clients, but I also know that they can be pretty not resident friendly. Like they like to close and even though they're there, not return a vehicle until the next following day or the next following Monday. If they're doing business with us, can we not require them to be available on weekends for, because I've gotten calls on it. I mean, they won't let me get my car till Monday, yet they're there. And it would seem that maybe requiring a little bit better of customer service would be appropriate.
Mayor and Councilmember Torgerson, as long as, depending on the guidelines of the contract, and I don't have all those details in front of us, so as long as they're abiding by the rules of the contract, that they have to follow those. So if they're in violation, that would be a violation of our contract. Between purchasing and our traffic section, they would investigate any complaints for, oh, there you are.
The enforcers.
For failure.
Yeah, Chief's exactly right. It depends on what's written in the contract, but we, we perhaps can do a better job of educating our customers to talk to us when they have issues so that we can track complaints, verify if they are complaints that are against the contract language that we have with them and then we can respond appropriately at that time.
Can we in the future maybe alter our contracts a little bit to?
If there are weaknesses in those contracts, after seeing those complaints and understanding what those challenges are, then absolutely we could adjust those in the future, but, but being aware of challenges that, that, that customers might be experiencing so that we can address them.
How's this, before the next time this comes up, can we have a conversation about that?
If I can add one thing, and keep in mind, this contract that you're approving tonight is a five-year contract with five one-year extension options. So it may be 10 years until you review it again, but if there are amendments that need to be made for cause, we can obviously come back. But, and not speaking about those on this contract or those that bid, if there are issues with tow companies, because the examples you gave, we hear that often, and they can always contact the police department to see if they're in violations. There are two sets of rules. We have the state law, which all of them have to follow. We also have our contract, which these four companies have to abide by.
Sort of an answer?
Chief, is it possible to make some of those adjustments with this contract since it technically hasn't been executed yet?
This contract has gone through an RFP process and, and is set. We believe it allows us to manage the way that we need to. It allows PD to operate the way that they need to, to clear vehicles off the roadway. We believe that it allows customers appropriate levels of, of service. And so when our vendors fail to do that, it's our job to hold those vendors accountable. We can't do that if we don't know specifics and sometimes complaints aren't as specific. And so that is why I, I started with a, perhaps we can do a better job of making it clear, this is where, you can come to PD, you can, you know, here is where you can file a complaint about a towing experience you might have so that we can look into it and see if in fact those details were the way they, they were expressed and determine how, how that works with the contract language.
Okay. As that is, anyone have any other questions?
I will.
Councilmember Lyons.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Buck. Is there a, I'm understanding what you're saying, this is already set, right? And the complaints that I'm hearing that Councilmember Torgerson is talking about as a person, something happens on weekend and they can't get the car, a Friday and they can't get it to Monday. There's a lot of our citizens at work, irregular work weeks, and that can be problematic if they've got to get to work or something. Would you mind taking a look at the Ts and Cs and letting us know if there is provisions for weekend retrieval if possible?
Yeah, absolutely, I will do that. And I don't have them on the top of my memory to, to be able to answer that directly right now, but I will review that specific question and respond back with some details for council of what those are.
All right, thank you. I didn't mean to put you on the spot. I didn't figure you would have it, but I would appreciate that information. Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilmember Bonjivani.
Is there a, a time-specific reason that this has to be approved tonight or can we review this next meeting after you guys come back with some answers?
We can. If the contract does not meet with council's expectations, we would put this RFP aside, rework the contract and re-go through this process. If you have dealt with towing companies in the past, this is a big process and they will work hard to try to wedge competitors out, to adjust and tweak, and, and the same things that you're describing are the things that we go through to get to this point. We do feel like we have a, a solid contract that allows fair treatment of customers in the, in the existing contract and in the process that we followed.
Okay.
All right, Councilmember Lyons.
So if I understand you correctly, the, if we did ask for a change, you would have to go through the whole RFP process again. You couldn't, we don't have a policy to allow for addendums to it or more clarity. It's hard set fast.
It would be, this is a five-year term, and so the opportunity to open that, we could certainly ask them, the, the four response, you know, successful respondents to this RFP, if they are willing to do that, they could decide that that changes their, their payment and, and cost structure, which it could snowball into a, the, the RFP, it needs to be redone and it is a number of months of work. That's not the problem, but looking at what are we gonna get changed and making sure that, that it's the way we want it to be. I believe that we are there. I believe that we have the ability to provide the services the residents need. We need to hold them accountable when they fail to meet the obligations that are in there.
I, I do understand that. I just, I don't feel like that answers the question that has been brought forward because...
We can, we can delay this, get you some answers and bring it back.
I would, I would appreciate that.
On June 10th without amending the contract. It's certainly something we could do.
And then I think we need to understand, because I go and, and have issued contract addendums with companies in the past and say, this is only what we're gonna bid on and that's it. And you lock the rest of it down. And if you don't want to bid on this, you're gonna be disqualified. We're the end customer, we set the requirements. They need to dance to our sheet of music per se. So we could say, hey, look, we want this added, please bid this part of it as an addendum to that. And we have that ability, correct? to that, and we have that ability, correct?
We do, and, and they then, again, can respond.
I get it, but if they want the business, they'll dance to our sheet of music, and that's my expectation to communicate to them. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Thank you.
Mayor Anderson.
I just want to caution you, I don't know that any of you have ever dealt with these companies when they're negotiating contracts with us, but it's a nasty, nasty process, and they will all claim that they're being wronged in some way or another and mess up. Hawkins being very kind in talking about going through this process with this particular industry, so, just so we go into this all understanding that that's what we face with this industry. They'll challenge the contracts, they'll say somebody's doing it, the town is up to something, there's just lots of, lots of moving parts to these contracts of these towing companies. I've been unfortunately in some of those discussions with them.
Mayor.
Okay, Councilmember, are you finished, Mayor Anderson? Okay, Councilmember Torgerson.
How's this? Do we have an internal policy that we decide not to deal with people that get a lot of poor reviews?
We have removed towing vendors from our list in the past for poor behavior, and we have the ability to do that.
Okay, and is it possible that we can recommend, maybe they have weekend hours, and the people that comply with giving us weekend hours, we tend to reward a little bit more than those that don't?
I will explore our options with, with legal and, and our purchasing experts.
It's negotiating. I'd want to wait till the 10th.
So Mayor and Council, I, I just pulled down the contracts, right? So there's four contracts that were on the agenda, they're all the same. Here's what it says about hours of operation right now, this is what, if they were approved, what they'd be required to do. They've got to provide their services 24 hours a day, seven days a week, that's the towing when called by the police department. The hours of operation, it, it requires them to be open 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM, Monday through Friday, and they have the option on Saturday and Sunday to be open, and if they are going to be open on Saturday and Sunday, it has to be open for a minimum of four hours. So currently, they're not required to be open on the weekends. Now, the, the council and the town absolutely has the right to postpone the RFP, to, as, as Hawkins mentioned, we could reject the RFP and start over, and put in new requirements, including being open on weekends, if that's something the council wanted to do, just understanding it would just delay this process somewhat. But if that was what the council wanted, a requirement to be open for a certain amount of time on weekends, right now, it also excludes certain holidays, just the major holidays right now, they're not required to be open. That's something the council has to do. What, what we don't know, and I think we would need to get feedback, or at least a recommendation would be from the towing industry, is would we get any bids, right? I don't know if they're normally open on weekends, and from a staffing standpoint and a financial standpoint, if it makes business or business sense for them to be open. One concern would be, and I think we'd need to get solicit feedback from the industry, is if this was a requirement that the town had, and we get no bidders, because they say, look, we don't do this because it doesn't make financial sense to be open on a Sunday when you may get one person in a four-hour window. Or maybe they do, I, I don't know, I just don't know what the industry would, would require at that point.
Okay, Councilmember Buckland was ahead, so.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Chris, to add to that, under, it's a contract center packet, so under H Vehicle Access, where you were looking, it talks about time, but in here, it actually just says that the contractor must make all towed vehicles stored at the facility available to the owner, blah, 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 during the contractor's business hours. So this portion, it's, it's their business hours. I do know, having run the RFP process for this, having run this program for years, other cities all had a single tow contract. We chose to do this because it did, we felt like benefited our, our citizens better, so that somebody doesn't get the monopoly and then start controlling things in a negative way. But I, what I recall was, none of the other cities who had the single tow contract also had, nobody was getting their, their cars out on the weekends. They have to be available to tow them, and those guys are not your business people, they're not the ones responsible in the office. So I, I think we can table it, I can't remember who said it, if it was you, Chris, or someone on the dais here, that I do think we will struggle to get someone to put in for the RFP, if we're going to put, force them to now have people in the office on Saturdays and Sundays when they don't normally.
I don't have the, the staff member here tonight that, that helped set this up, but I do know that as we set the scope of work and put out the RFP, we looked at what the marketplace is of all of our surrounding cities, what do they have in their contracts, and we would mirror that. And so this is a level above that, and, and we can certainly do that, and, and we would, we need to do what's best for Gilbert. We believe this contract does achieve that, but, but absolutely, we can pursue and answer additional questions and take care of that.
Okay, Councilmember Bon Giovanni.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Could we do something as simple as throw another RFP for Friday, Saturday, and Sunday? Keep these, keep these contracts, but throw another RFP for Friday, Saturday, and Sunday in the future if we get more complaints?
It is something we could consider. What you would have is Company A tows car, and, and the person, and, and they didn't respond to the weekend RFP. Company B tows a different car, they did respond to it, person who owns car, A wishes to get it on the weekend. It certainly, it adds a level of complexity.
Sure.
That, that may not get us to where we want to go.
Should, could we have the RFP stating that if your car is towed on Friday, that goes to this company? If we do a separate RFP for a weekend, it would go to that company on the weekend? Well, I don't want to make too much of a problem if there isn't a problem to begin with. One or two people is not a problem. So what I'm saying is, can we reserve the right to do another RFP for a weekend if we get a bunch of people now having complaints to your department?
Yeah, and I think I'll, I'll just look at, Chris, but yes, we have the right to issue an RFP for another line of service that we don't have a contract for in place.
Okay. I just don't want to make a problem if we're fucking two people. You know, if it's a, if it's a number of people, then maybe we could do another RFP.
And Mayor, Councilmember Bon Giovanni, the, the contract on the termination says the town may terminate this agreement for any reason or no reason with seven days' notice. So to your point, I think if the council were to approve these contracts, but then hear from residents that the weekend being open on a Saturday, Sunday is very important, and you think the numbers justify it, we could go out and do an RFP, even though these are five-year contracts with one-year renewals. If council wanted to do so, we could terminate at any time, whether it's six months now or three years from now, do a new, well, we would do the new RFP, and then, and then coincide the termination with the new RFP with the requirement to have not just nine to five minimum hours, Monday through Friday, but also include weekends. So we could do that now, or we could do it at some point in the future if the council feels like that's an important component to have.
Young, are you finished?
Yeah.
Okay, Councilmember Koprowski.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, and thank you, Chris, for that suggestion. My concern with adding the additional requirements and, and service levels in the RFP is that that cost is then going to be extended to the customer. And so there is that risk that if we ask for that higher service level, that then all customers are going to have to pay more for that service. So I would suggest what Town Attorney Chris Payne suggested is, let's get some input over the next six months of, from our residents, and then decide if we want to terminate these contracts and issue a new RFP.
Okay, Councilmember Lyons.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. To your point, Councilmember Koprowski, I agree with you on that. My concern primarily is, like I said, people who work in a regular work week, and also those folks are getting charged for each day it's sitting there, and oftentimes, the people that hit and hit, get hit with this are the ones that are at least can't afford it. So that's, that's where my mindset with it is, I understand what we're doing, I just want to make sure that we're not putting an undue burden on our citizens for our convenience, that, that, that's primarily my motivation for it. So I agree with you as far as, you know, let's get some data, see how many people we do have impacted by it, and then we can move from there, so.
And Mayor, Councilmember Lyons, if I can also add that, based on the RFP, based on what they bid for, their, their fees are set based on what they agree to in this RFP. So it's not one set of fees, and then the next day, it's their own. The tow companies can do that with their, their other toes, but they have to abide with the terms of this contract of what fees they propose. Now, as part of the evaluation process for procurement, is evaluating those fees, making sure they're comparable and fair for the market. And I'll also add that the four companies that are on this RFP are the current four that we currently have over the last five years.
Councilmember Torgerson.
Rather than slow this down anymore, just applying typical business, why don't you make a few calls and say, by the way, I'd like to know what your hour, you intend for your hours on Saturday and Sunday to be, and just if anybody happens to be open Saturday or Sunday, let's push some business their way, and people will start to fall in line when they're not getting as much business. Can we just make it simple and move forward?
We can absolutely reach out to the companies and do that.
Okay, so, anyone else have any question? Councilmember Buckland?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Torgerson, I, and Lyons totally get your why, that's loving our citizens, and I love that. I think the concern that I have, based on the contract and knowing how it works, it's the same contract we've had for years, there's a rotation, and they go on the list, and to deviate from that because someone chose to be open special on a weekend and not can get us hung up in the contract itself. I think what Councilmember Koprowski said makes sense, I would like to take it a little further in terms of, staff is crushed, we know that they're beyond lean, a ton of work would end to this. For the most part, I think the contracts have been working, because they, no one's changed them over, over the decades, doesn't mean there aren't problems along the way. Rather than go to a lot of research, my interest is not having, not tying our, our very busy staff up with that, but just pay attention to the complaints. If we get complaints that don't come to the, to the chief, then it's our obligation to, to pass that down, so they have awareness, they can have the conversation, get, you know, deal with the tow company, and then what our contract does allow is, if we get a ton of complaints and we find that they're not providing good service for our citizens who deserve that, then we can terminate them, give them seven days' notice and terminate them. I'm not as concerned about the weekend, getting the car back, only because I, I and Chief and his staff, we didn't tow cars that were drivable, they were, they were totaled in crashes, or they were DUIs, for the most part, sometimes abandoned, but rare, but they're cars that are not drivable anyways, and to get it out, you, you crash on Saturday and to get it out Saturday afternoon, you're not getting in the body shop anyways. And so they're never going to get you in the same day. So I don't think it's as big a problem as we're concerned, I really appreciate and love, you know, the fight for our citizens and, and want to do the same, but I think we're making more of it. If we just go with it, we pass through what comes to us, they track what's going on, you find the problem offender and you deal with it, and then you get them off. We have others on the list and others that want to be on it. That would be my recommendation.
Mayor and Council, if I can just add one more thing, we do, as part of the contract, we audit them, we do not just wait for complaints to come in. So we do audits of the, each of the tow companies to make sure they're in compliance, not only with what their, that their paperwork's in order, they're charging the fees that they're supposed to be charging, and their response times are within the contract guidelines as well.
All right, thank you, thank you, Chief. Any other questions up and down the dais?
Yeah.
Are we, are we good?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I, I agree, I think, we don't even know if there's a problem yet, so let's see if there's a problem. If we get heard from, if citizens let us know that there's a problem, let's turn it over to Chief and his staff, and we'll, let's just see if there's a problem. If there's a problem, you know, Chris said, there's ways for us to get out of it, so let's just see if there's a problem.
Okay, so, so I'm going to try to recap this. We are going to go ahead and vote as the group, the group numbers, and vote yes for this, well, whatever the vote ends up being. Okay, I just wanted to make sure, I, I have this straight, okay. Anyone have any other questions? All right, Chief, thank you, thank you both very much. All right, so with no other questions, I am going to make a motion to approve the consent agenda, items number 10 through 24. Can I have a second?
Second.
Okay, seconded by Councilmember Koprowski, and please vote. So motion carried, seven zero. And with that, I believe I will turn this back over to the mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. We have two items on the administrative calendar. First is a presentation, the auditor, certified public accountant, presentation of annual audited financial reports for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2024. Hawkins, are you doing this one, too?
Yes, Mayor and Council, sorry, I walked all the way back there. We did do the staff report last time, and so this is now to fulfill the, the statute. Our auditor is here to, to present their portion, and without further ado, I will turn the time over to Jim.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, for having me here tonight to present the results of the town's fiscal year 2024 financial statement audit. These results are reported in three separate audit reports that I'm going to cover real quick here. The first one would be the report on the audit of the financial statements. So as Hawkins mentioned earlier, he presented the, the ACFER, the town's annual comprehensive financial report, and within that report, we issue our opinion on those financial statements in that report. And then in addition to that, we issue what's called a single audit report, and because of the level of federal funding that the town receives, they're required to undergo a single audit, it's also known as uniform guidance audit, and within that report, there's two separate reports. One is our report on internal control over financial reporting, and the other is report on compliance with federal programs. And the results of these reports, first one, I mentioned the opinion on the financial statements, it was an unmodified opinion, that's a clean opinion, that means the financial statements are free of material misstatement and can be relied upon. And then within that single audit report, the report on internal controls over financial reporting, this is where we disclose any deficiencies we found during the audit, we had no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies to report. And then moving on to the, the report on major federal programs, also with that one, we had no deficiencies to report there as well. And in addition to that, no other findings that we report in a management letter. So very clean audit, very good job. And then just a few final comments, working through the audit, management was very helpful, very cooperative, everything requested was provided to us, we had no disagreements with how things were reported in the financial statements, and then at the conclusion of the audit, we were able to get the management representation letter signed. That's all I have, so if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions concerning the audit? Thank you, I think this is just a presentation tonight, so we'll move on to the next administrative item, which is consider acceptance of the budget report and contingency report for the third quarter of fiscal year 2025. entertain a motion?
For 25 and 26, we just, 26.
25 was just a presentation, we need motion for 26.
I'd like to make a motion to accept item 26, the acceptance of the budget report and contingency report for the third quarter of fiscal year 2025.
I'll second.
I'll second it.
It moved by Councilmember Torgerson, seconded by Councilmember Bon Giovanni, that we accept the budget report and contingency report for the third quarter fiscal year 2025. Please vote. Motion carries seven zero. Moving on to communications from citizens. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor Anderson. To begin. Thank you. To begin the communications from citizens, I will now read the, the rules of decorum. We value your participation of our community members. Sorry, I need my glasses. Okay. We value the participation of our community members and robust exchange of ideas. However, it's essential that this discourse remains respectful and constructive, reflecting the professionalism expected in such forms. Misinformation and personal attacks undermine our collective efforts and do not contribute to the productive dialogue necessary for our town's progress. This is an opportunity for the public to address the town council directly about issues impacting the town. Accordingly, the town council will not allow for moments of silence or playing of music or other recorded materials, which could distract from the meeting decorum or violate copyrights. We understand and appreciate the passion our community members bring to this session. We remind everyone that clapping during the meeting is not acceptable. This practice can disrupt the flow of discussion, potentially intimidate others and distract from the respectful atmosphere to, we strive to maintain. Tonight, we'll invite you to come up to the podium. When you, when you come up to the podium, state your name and your city of residence, and you will have three minutes to directly address the town council unless otherwise indicated. The current speaker will be using three minute, if the current speaker will be using three minutes of another person's time. That person should state their name, the city they live in, and acknowledge that they are donating their three minutes to the current speaker. In accordance with state law, we are not able, we are unable to provide responses to the public comments during this meeting. Please be assured that your comments and input are heard and valued. And our first speaker will, will be Timothy Cano.
I'm, I'm here for speeding. I, about two years ago, somebody came through my back wall. If I would have been over there, we probably wouldn't have been here. This has happened to me Saturday night again, and I want to see what we can do about this. Because I feel something needs to be done. I've been in the same house, and it's happened to me twice. I've reached out to, to, to you, maybe a couple months ago, Mayor. I didn't get a response. I don't know if that was moving when the other Bridget was here, or, but I just, I want to come to you guys to see what we can, we can do about this. I, I've already done petitions, got, and there's nothing been done. You guys put a, a photo radar out there. It didn't do anything but make them drive faster.
Can we direct somebody from staff to talk with this gentleman?
Yeah, Vice Mayor, if we can get your contact information, we will follow you, sir. If, Chief?
Yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you. And, and, you know, we're not allowed from the dais to respond, so.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
You're welcome. Okay, our next speaker is Monica C. I'll let you come up.
Hi, I'm Monica Corroclano. Thank you very much for the time you're giving me. I'll be here to discuss about the differentiated tax between personal property actually and rental property that we have. And I read in the press that you're planning to increase the property tax for the rental properties. And I find that, that is something that it's not fair, because the money that we pay the rental property with was already taxed. We pay taxes on the rental. And if we have to increase the, to pay more taxes on the rental properties, that will be passed along to the renters. So this is my concern. That's why I'm here today.
Patrick, can we have the same follow-up?
Yeah, Mayor, and I could just maybe provide a response to incorrect information that we are not raising taxes on rental properties.
Perfect. Thank you. That's wonderful.
That's quick.
All right. Thank you very much. With that, that concludes the communications from citizens. And I will turn this back over to Mayor Anderson.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. You can see on our agenda, future meetings, future study session. And I know Councilmember Bon Giovanni talked about another possible study session to add to that list. So you can follow up on that. Next is communications report from the town manager.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, I'll start with department and division highlights, beginning with, as we're well aware from the proclamation earlier this evening, it's National Public Works Week. So we're going to be highlighting our departments and divisions within our Public Works Department, which constitutes solid waste, environmental compliance, fleet, and streets. This is a picture of our solid waste, some of the members of our solid waste division, and a highlight some of the services they provide to this community is curbside collection, customer outreach and education, front load containers for commercial customers, and roll-off containers for residents. In 2024, they serviced almost 4.2 million black cans, which are our general reuse that heads to the landfill, and just under 3 million blue cans, which is the recycled materials that go through the central material recycling facility and on to reuse and other products. We landfilled approximately 86,000 tons of trash, and we recycled just under 17 million tons of recyclable materials. We collected 200, roughly 255,000 bulk piles of trash, and that constituted 16,000 bulk tons of waste collected through our bulky item pickup service, and we recycled 129 tons of glass materials. The division highlights to highlight some of our employees, some of our bulk operators participated in the swan truck rodeo in Tucson. John Burress placed first place in rear loader competition. Cole Hoard placed first in the roll-off competition. And Darren Horalt played, took second place in the rear load. The team rerouted all commercial routes to be more efficient and implemented a new routing schedule for commercial and roll-off drivers. We acquired 30 to 35 new commercial customers and serviced over 2,300 roll-offs in March 2025 alone. And the bulk team minimized zones A, B, and E from seven routes to six. Upcoming, we've, will be partnering with Goodwill to provide monitored donation containers, helping divert textiles from the land use and support reuse initiatives. And we also will be piloting the bulk service call-in pilot to improve our current bulk service in October for efficiency and reduced illegal dumping. Moving on to environmental compliance, and this is some of the members in our environmental compliance division. The division's duties involves environmental permitting, compliance and enforcement, stormwater operations and maintenance, air quality, and residential and town-generated hazardous waste. Some of the statistics for that team, 7.2 million pounds of materials were diverted from our landfills since 2017. Just under 118,000 pounds of E-waste recycled. Just over 680,000 pounds of material collected in total. Just under 13,000 residents served, and just under 5,000 gallons of latex paint recycled. We saw an 8.8% increase in total weight brought into the household hazardous waste facility from the previous year, an 8.5% increase in E-waste, and an 8.7% increase in the number of cars from the previous years of service. And that was for the year 2024. The stormwater operation and maintenance impact, 100, just under 145,000 storm pipes cleaned in 2024. Forty-four, and that's probably linear feet. I apologize for that. Forty-four infrastructure repairs, replacements, 1,713 individual storm structures, just under 5,000 infrastructures inspected, and 12 tons of material removed from those lines. In regards to our stormwater infrastructure, there are just under 11,000 structures, just under 85 miles of storm pipe itself, and 407 drywells in our community. Moving on to the fleet division. Functions, the fleet division maintains Gilbert's vehicles and equipment, including emergency response, sanitation, and public service vehicles, ensuring a safe, clean and safe community. They do vehicle procurement, maintenance and repair, fuel, fuel management, lifecycle costs, preventative maintenance schedules, regulatory compliance, and disposal of vehicles through an auction, as well as various sustainability initiatives. And the Gilbert fleet ensures that all town vehicles are safe, cost-effective, and ready to support public services. Looking at impact, we've got a 70% technician productivity ratio, 7,900 average annual work orders processed, and 1,160-plus vehicles, equipment supported. The preventative completion rate in January of '25 overall was 46%. In March, 25, 62. And for PD, 74% in January '25, and in March, 99%. We also made some fuel island improvements to our system as well. Moving on to the streets and a picture of the streets cruise. Their mission is to maintain the roadway system, ensuring a high degree of reliability, safety, rideability, and meeting or exceeding all applicable regulations for roadways in a cost-effective manner. Streets infrastructure itself, we have 943 centerline miles of street in Gilbert, just under 39,000 traffic signs, 30,000-plus streetlights, and 13-plus, over 13 million square feet of landscape. The pavement preservation impact, so the pavement condition index was 72.7. Our target is 72, and the national average is 66. 105 miles of surface seal treatments were completed in 2000, or I'm sorry, fiscal year '25, and 95% of all pothole work orders were completed within one working day, and our target is 90% for that measure. The streetlights impact, 410 streetlights were upgraded to new foundation mounted poles for some of the newer members of our council. A lot of the poles that were put in at, at various points in Gilbert's development were mounted into the ground, and we're seeing the early degradation of those poles from exposure to water. That is eroding the steel and forcing us to replace a lot of those poles early. So we are proactively going around and remounting a lot of those poles into raised pedestals to avoid that contact with the water and extend the light, life of that infrastructure. And 100% of all streetlight work orders were completed within five days or less, and our target is to get those done within less than seven days. Moving on to retirements, recognitions, and awards. We were, first want to congratulate our town of Gilbert employees who recently graduated from Park University, cohort five, a master's in public administration. I'll highlight some of those individuals. Sean Marie Arula, she's our health and wellbeing manager on the people team. Ariel Harton, she's an IT specialist two on the IT team, and George Toll, who's a recreation coordinator two in Parks and Recreation. In addition to Sal DeSanto, who's a planner in the Development Services Department, Seth Brownwell, who's a sergeant in our police department, and Keith Newman, who's a senior planner in our Development Services Department. A huge round of congratulations to those employees for continuing their career and, and advancing their skills. And lastly, we want to congratulate Officer Matheson. He was recognized by the National Association of School Resource Officers, exceptional service award for Region Seven. He was recognized for his dedication to building strong relationships with students and ensuring their safety exemplifies the true spirit of Gilbert, of the Gilbert Police Department's school resource officer. So again, congratulations to Officer Matheson for great recognition for the work he's doing. And he's currently a school resource officer at Cooley Middle School here in town. And with that, Mayor, that's all I have for this evening.
Thank you. Reports from the council. Councilmember Lyons?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple things. With Memorial Day coming up this weekend, you're all invited to HD South, where we're going to have, the Veterans Advisory Board are going to have a Memorial Day celebration on the civic lawn from 8:30 to 9:30. A little over 100 years ago, groups of, of folks in this country got together to remember those who gave the ultimate sacrifice for our, our freedom, and we want to come and remember them. The event will include a flag, a wreath ceremony, and a battlefield cross, as well as a POW MIA table and more. So I encourage you to come and take a part of that if you would, please. If you've noticed, in the Heritage District, the military tribute banners are up. They will be on display from May 14th through July 8th, coinciding with Memorial Day and Independence Day. That's the display period. At that point, they'll be taken down and then reinstalled for Veterans Day. We want to thank everybody who purchased a banner and, for honoring their veteran. On the second slide here, the Veterans Advisory Board also has the State 48 shirts back, and they're in stock, ready to purchase. This is part of our fundraising. So head over to the town store and grab you one. And we do need volunteers. So if you're looking for a way to get involved with the veteran community, scan the QR code for more information, or contact me or one of our Veteran Advisory Board members. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bon Giovanni?
Thank you, Mayor, from Parks and Rec. We're having an H2O Fest. Beat the heat at one of Gilbert's most popular events, the H2O Fest. Join us on Thursday, June 5th, Freestone Park, from 3:00 PM to 8:30 PM for water slides, food trucks, music, and more. Three sessions will be held to ensure optimum slide time for each participant. Tickets are on sale now.
Thank you. Councilmember Torgerson?
Tomorrow, in this room, at 6 o'clock, there'll be a redevelopment committee meeting. And it'll be interesting to see what the south anchor to is proposing. The south anchor of this Heritage District is the southwest, no, the northwest corner of Gilbert and Elliott. And they'll be showing plans for what they're proposing to build here, and to see if it fits with the vision that they signed off on a couple of years ago. So it'll be an interesting day to, to take a look at what's going to happen here.
Councilmember Koprowski?
I just wanted to add on to Councilmember Bon Giovanni's comment about the H2O Fest. If you haven't been to it, it is your one opportunity to use the sloped hills at Freestone Park as a slip and slide. Very fun for families.
For the mayor, I, I just want to again thank the Salt River Pima Maricopa Indian Community and President Javier for meeting with us yesterday. It was a very special meeting, and I want to thank the staff that organized that also. They did a wonderful job. And I told the, the president, we didn't want to wait another 10 years to do that again because I think it's worthwhile to get together and talk about issues that we share. Plus, I wish I had the two figurines up here. Give me a couple of beautiful figurines. So it was a very special time. Any other comments? If not, Councilmember Buckland?
Thank you, Mayor. Just as we're approaching June 10th and the final budget adoption, I've been pulling a lot of data, got charts and graphs, not going to show that today. But just something I want to throw out on the radar is, in looking at multiple things, I'm going to speak specifically about our staffing, we are, based on the data, I have found the lowest-staffed municipality in Maricopa County at 5.88 FTEs per thousand. Next closest to us is Chandler, 6.25, and they don't provide their own trash service. And if I think Jessica's here still, or somebody can attest that that's more than 100 employees, that we have to supply for service that they don't, and they still have more staff than we do to handle their, their large workloads. The average is around 8.3, and the high was 11.99. So I just wanted to point that out as we approach the budget. And I know we're, you know, it's tight and we're hurting on money, but know we're, you know, it's tight and we're hurting on money, but we, I think I can speak for the entire council, that appreciate you, staff, all the staff that's sitting here now, here at 7:00 AM, still here tonight, coming in tomorrow morning at 7:00 AM. Just a, a big, a lot of gratitude for how hard you work doing more with less. I just want to make sure everybody, everybody knows that.
Thank you. I don't know how Tempe gets all those people in that upside-down pyramid. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
We are adjourned. Thank you.